Alright, I'm gonna have to have a video come look at it.
Yeah. I don't think, yeah, I guess, is it, is there a control to it somewhere?
I don't, I have no idea how to control it. It's okay.
All right, what is tonight?
There's nobody in gym, so.
Okay. I think it's angling too far down. Okay. Looks like it's, looks like it's shooting the floor.
Good evening, this is the work session for Northfield City Council, February twenty first of two thousand twenty-three. This meeting was properly advertised in accordance with Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, and in the press of Atlantic City on January seventh of this year. May I have a flag salute by Council President Pro Tem Dewey, please? Before I call roll, for those participating via Zoom, we are having an issue with the camera. I do understand the camera feed is not allowing you to see the members of City Council, but hopefully the audio is functioning and that you can hear everybody clearly. Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Buchi, Mrs. Carthano.
Here.
Mr. Dewey.
Yeah.
Mr. Leeds.
Yeah.
Mr. Nataro.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Palestine.
Here.
And Mr. Chow. Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right on into our, into our committee reports, Councilman Leeds. Councilman Dewey.
A couple things, um, we did speak with, about the, uh, staff at the bandstand, they will replay all the horns. Uh, we just, um, treated them right now, we're not gonna do the tracks or anything, so we do some all three to, to the grid. Secondly, one of the candidates, I believe it's fifty-seven, made me in the fraud. I think that's a conversation with, um, you know, about the, uh, use of the practice field. And I did allow him to have limited access to the football field during the month of March. Um, when I add these spaces, well, we're different range in the practice field. It kind of less than it can move their operation through the, uh, per diem. At the end of March, the field will be closed down if you're playing a little team, Matthew. So, that's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Buchi. Vivid.
Uh, we have two AEDs that are left in service, the other two are obsolete. The two AEDs, uh, which we use quite often, left in service are sixteen years old, and they're eight years out of warranty. So, they're on their last leg, and, uh, it was recommended by, uh, Fujito Mel that we update, uh, rate. I reached out to Shannon, and she graciously said that we could purchase at least one, and then, uh, after that meeting, uh, she found money to, uh, purchase another one. I also reached out, uh, in an OEM meeting downstairs with, uh, Tim Joe. Uh, he's looking into Atlantic Care, I believe they have a, uh, like a buy one, get one program. Um, and I also reached out to, uh, Inspire's, uh, using supervisor, uh, Paul Winkle. And he said that Inspire, uh, also had some sort of program that he's gonna get back to me. So we may actually end up with work.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief. It's wonderful. Thank you. Can you forward that to me, that, uh, the paper? I'm interested in that. Uh, Councilman Smith.
President. Central Municipal Courts has a new chief judge that was appointed. I don't know if anyone saw that information, uh, dispatched us, but, uh, Richard Balleroy is the new chief judge of the Central Municipal Courts. That's the news there, uh, Little League and Babe Ruth, the.
Yeah. Yeah, why? There's nothing going on. If, if anything remotely comes close to be able to hear it and.
Go ahead.
Oh, we wanted to hear if something good came up.
That's not me. Growing. Opening day for Little League is April fifteenth. We look forward to that. Starting Northridge Community School, their next meeting is Monday night on the twenty, Saturday. I did attend the strategic, the second strategic planning meeting, which was on February the eighth. And they have a third one coming up next month, I guess, uh, as far as actors. And, uh, finally shared services, we had a dispatch meeting on February ninth. We met, uh, with, uh, Councilman Leeds, Councilman Power, myself. Met with Linwood, and had representatives Motorola, uh, to, to share some details on, you know, what it would take, what it would take to undertake and bring dispatch back to town. So we're, we're looking at that, and then they're going to put something together for us. So that we have something more to look at. And I know that this is under the work session for our new business, and it's on the reverse side of our work ethic agenda, but we emailed a center about the shared services feasibility study for countywide filing the MS, essentialized dispatch.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that was just put out there, I guess we have to have a discussion of that in our, in our new business.
Yeah, we don't wanna explore. I mean, that, that's gonna be the end result there, you know? It's quite an undertaking.
Fire the MS, it doesn't prove police.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, but it's something, I guess, that they're, what are we looking at? That's all I have, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, and the, um, Northfield Community Schools Strategic Meeting is the thirtieth.
Of March.
Of March, correct. Uh, Councilwoman Kirk-Pagnon.
Thank you, Council President, um, for technology. Um, we did talk to, I did talk to Mr. Smith at Mainland, um, asking if everybody could please get here by six o'clock to tape our meetings. Um, I also am talking to, um, our clerk to find out if we, what we could do, something moving forward about getting better video, possibly airing it somewhere else. Um, so we'll be in communication about that. I went to the cultural committee meeting on Saturday, the eighteenth. And we did talk about the bandstand getting repairs, um, there were some other minor repairs that had to be done. And we talked about, um, possible, a ring doorbell video so that they could see what's going on in the area to make sure that the museum stays secured.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's a possibility. And, uh, for Mainland's meeting, it's tonight, so again, I couldn't make it. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Nataro.
Nothing to report tonight, that's President.
Thank you. And, uh, all I have is, uh, we do have budget meetings coming up, so, uh, I'll have more to report down the line. Okay. Uh, we'll move on to the, uh, open topics. Uh, I believe we're still pending on, uh, you have feedback, you have, every time I go to skip you, you have something. They hear back from you. I know. I hope. Oh, great. Thank you. Uh, and the sale of property, that next one, we did, there's no update tonight, but, uh, as mentioned last week, Habitat is interested, so we're moving forward that as it, as it progresses, we'll keep everyone informed. Uh, the next topic, the parking on Tilton Road and the bike path. Chief, did you have any input on that as far as, uh?
So, the police department did speak with, uh, fourteen sixteen Zion Road. He's located directly behind, uh, Jersey Cow. Mr. David Stanbrough, he is interested in extending the, uh, no parking for Tilton Road. We also reached out to the county and spoke with the county, and came up with a, a possible solution, uh, which would be dependent on you folks. It would be a loading zone only on both sides of Tilton Road where Jersey Cow is, so it's fair to Tilton Market, and it's also fair to Jersey Cow. What we could do is we could put time restrictions on those loading zones, so they can offload, um, and still basically keep up the no parking zones or extend them to, as far as, as far as you, you choose. The county said that if you adopt an ordinance, they will adopt it as well, but the city would have to, they would take the, uh, the reins on that.
And if, as a loading zone though, then it's only for, if patrons park there, then they're subject to potential ticket.
Only for their merchandise, for, for a tractor trailer or a lot of stuff, and during whatever time we specify. And, uh, it's not for residential parking or business park.
Okay, unless they're unloading a car with groceries or ice cream. Okay. Okay, yeah, uh, it's a go, as, uh, Ms. Canese just said, we would, we'll also check with zoning to make sure it doesn't conflict with what they have as far as a loading zone, but.
Just options for your education.
Thank you.
I've come here. What living truck, or what time living trucks come to Tilton Market?
Morning.
There's some, the morning trucks, I, I was trying to keep that in mind, really. From my observation, if you leave before twelve o'clock, but.
Thank you. Uh, any, uh, any new grants that we have, uh? And the next thing would be the, uh, LEAP grant that we, uh, that Councilman Smith was speaking of, you know, Councilman Leeds, did you have any input there?
Yeah, I, I had dinner with, uh, Chairman Ridley last night, talking about it a little bit. The county looking into this, finding the free grant for firing the MS. It's over here, County Fire Party Association. Just concerned with the county, the lack of, or, of, that they get. Primarily, we just got, center in this county, he's been pulled by the police department. And as such, the police department, they're based with the, the people that. It's, it's no secret here that we have, uh, a problem once our part of our, being answered on the radio. The problem with this is I find that, uh, Chairman Ridley, for town like us, we might go there. That's great for firing the MS, then we gotta pay the county, and then we gotta continue to, they seem to draw free. And, uh, they are not really interested in exploring, um, police yet. Um, and quite frankly, as they told him, we did a study in two thousand thirteen that's still applicable today. Use that. Their feedback was that they didn't get it for the last town objectively. One of them being one of our, then, objective list, and comment that he made, meaning he was always million dollars in revenue. So of course I don't want the county to, but that's not feasible. Today, Danny, we, we, we have to do something, but without them taking the police firing the MS. This city is not on the benefit.
It's not an option. Thank you. Uh, I think we can look to try to do the grant, uh, as we look to do the, the joint overall dispatch, we can look at, at another grant, I think.
Yeah. Matter of fact, at the meeting, we had Councilman Smith talked about Senator Polk, he was there, uh, just in passing, he just said, hey, there's money available, uh, for grants.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, okay, if everyone can please refer to the, uh, meeting agenda. Approval of the minutes, Councilman Smith and Councilman Nataro. Uh, resolutions, is there anyone, any resolution that we need to pull from the consent agenda?
I think, uh, we, uh, which one is it here? Sixty, twenty, twenty-three, I don't want, I don't necessarily wanna pull it, I just wanna discuss it prior to, maybe.
You have a pull from the consent, we'll discuss it and vote on it separate.
Yeah, that's fine, perfect.
Which one was that, uh, sixty-one, sixty?
Sixty.
Okay, so, um, on the consent agenda, resolutions fifty-five through fifty-nine and sixty-one to sixty-three. Councilman Nataro and Councilman Leeds. And resolution sixty, Councilman Leeds, Councilman Dewey. Uh, ordinances, Councilman Dewey. And Councilwoman Buchi. And bill, payment of bills, Councilman Dewey, Councilwoman Buchi. Meeting notices, Councilman Smith. With that, the, uh, meeting is now open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any topic, we ask you please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Portnoy, I don't live in the city, but I'm the prospective purchaser of a property at eleven Roosevelt.
And you, what, what's your address?
Well, I don't live in the city, I live at twenty-six Stone Mill Court, A Harper Township.
Thank you.
Okay, the property eleven Roosevelt is not actually on Roosevelt, it's down one of those twenty-foot wide alleys that are between Roosevelt and Jackson and Roosevelt and Mount Vernon.
Okay.
This particular one is a dead-end alley. Uh, I came before to planning zoning board for a variance for frontage, which was granted. One of the conditions of the variance was that the alley must be paved. And I'm buying this property from an estate, and it's getting to be where the improvement cost to make it buildable are more than a lot's worth. The state's had, the state's had the property in the family for close to seventy years, like sixty-nine years. Uh, you know, the taxes are about two thousand dollars a year. The board suggested that I approach council about maybe the possibility of the city paving this alley. Uh, there's three, three of the alleys were already paved, there's one other one, like a two hundred feet down the same street that is not paved. There's three other properties on the alley that, 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 but the alley, two of them use it every single day for access to their garages. So one, I would like to ask council, when they do pave some of those alleys already, what determines which ones got paved and which ones didn't? Would the city consider paving this one? And, uh, and then I have another couple, I have a question for, for now, for also about sewer line.
Uh, where in, where on Roosevelt is it between which?
It's like one hundred feet offshore road, when you come down the shore road, if, if you're coming offshore road, you make a right-hand turn, it's the first alley right there, one half down.
Okay, it's, it's right, it's, it's up the street from Merlin House.
Yeah, right behind Roosevelt, but it's not, it's like ninety feet off Roosevelt where a property bought.
Yeah, right behind the first house.
Not a flag lot, it's an existing lot, it's always been there, part of the original tax map, it was never subdivided, or thought part of a subdivision.
Oh, just had, it, so that lot, the only access to that lot is by the alley.
Correct.
There's no, it's not, it doesn't come out.
Exactly, it was back there, surrounded by seven people's backyards.
And some of these, some of these alleys are paved, some of them are not, I mean, they're, it's very.
Roosevelt Avenue about seven years ago, and right after the house was done, they paved that alley.
It.
Or, you know, the city paved the alley.
Over game line, yeah.
So when I, I talked, when I talked to the board, I said, well, you know, since there's three other properties on the alley, and two of them use it every single day, if I have to include the cost, can, they chip in a share, and they said there's no, there's no process in, in place for them to assess other property.
For us to make them do it, yeah, they'd have to volunteer, I guess.
The other people, the property owners, were here, and they made like a fix, you know, a big think about it, obviously they don't wanna pay. We're gonna blame them.
I, I, the, I mean, the other alleys are probably just we don't know when they got paved, uh, yeah.
Well, the ones, the one on Roosevelt where I saw prior, it was, it was curved, the same as this one.
How long ago was that?
I wanna say it was probably eighteen, ten years ago.
Okay, is there any records on what, what, who paved it, or? Um, we'd have to, we'd have to look at that, I mean, certainly that's something we would have to decide if we have the ability to pay that, I mean, that's since it is, it is, you know.
This property assessed to fifty-five thousand, it was listed for sale for fifty-five thousand, there was no takers. They lowered it to forty-five thousand, the agent, the listing agent contacted all the neighbors around it, see if they were interested in chipping in, buying it to expand their backyards. None of them were. Uh, during the meeting, the mayor said that he remembers about ten years ago, then, then people were also contacted about purchasing it, and no one was interested at that time either. So the sewer line to bring the sewer up the street is like, including the tap fee and the road opening permit is twenty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
New Jersey would have not given me a price on extending the line until it was an approved lot, meaning, you know, meaning that I got the variance for it, so I don't even have a price for that. Any city electric is gonna be between fifteen hundred and four thousand dollars to bring the electric down. I haven't received a reply yet from phone or cable, but it, and, uh, during the meeting, I had asked, you know, the engineer, Matt Dorn, about what would be required, whether it be two inches plus two inches, you, you defer to, so if it's two plus two, my estimate from the paving company that I would use is like sixteen thousand dollars. So that's forty thousand just for paving in the sewer, which makes the lot pretty much worth zero.
Yeah, and, and you're looking to build some, build a, a, a house there?
Yes. Now, I can see if I was a big developer, you know, like Gerwood, she's putting up three hundred apartments, it's just one, you know, one house and one lot.
Yeah.
So the development cost, you know, is, is a big percentage of the construction cost that makes it not feasible. And it also makes it, uh, you know, a, a taxpayer, and a state that's been paying taxes on this property for close to seventy years, making their lot pretty much worthless.
Um, yeah, we'd have to, you, you all have to give us some time to do some research on, to see what, if anything, we can, uh,
like, uh, gravel right now?
Yes.
Like there's a little S-ten parked on it sometime.
Uh.
I'm in the right spot.
I'm not really sure.
Next to the garage, great two-door garage to the left, and there's a garage.
First, the first house on the right has the garage that runs on Roosevelt. And then, uh, I don't know if you know, the guy has a jitney, um, he, he has, he's on the, his garage at the back on the alley, on the right-hand side.
I'm just trying to see if I'm in the right spot.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's another garage, the out, the other house on, the front of Roosevelt on the corner, they have a garage in the back.
Yeah, I have to look into.
Yeah. Yeah, as I said, so we'll have to, we'll have to determine, if we, if we have the ability to pay for it as well.
My next question, about sewer lining. A lot be at, that's.
One second, please, uh, Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith has a question, kind of question, what? Uh, what do you estimate that the size of house being?
Uh, for better, going to have to have the house about twenty, probably about twenty, two hundred square feet. That fits, it, it fits in the existing, there's no other setback required except for frontage, which the lot has undersized frontage. So everything else fits in, you know, no coverage issues, no setback issues, no height issue, everything's performed.
It doesn't have any front, right?
It has fifty-three feet frontage on the alley.
Hmm, okay.
And then to sit on the alley, it's a twenty-foot wide alley, good, where this property stores, it goes down to ten feet wide, and the city's requiring that ten feet be dedicated back to the city. Which, why I'm the problem with that.
Um, Captain Nixon, what would you, what are your thoughts on that street twenty feet wide? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so, that's, okay, I, that's the thing. Make sure that part, at least make sure things are safe if it, if we do get to that point.
Okay, my next question is, while a lot be at, you know, their estimate is like twenty-one thousand and change for the actual sewer line. The tap, the tap Roosevelt Avenue, and bringing it to the curb line with eight thousand, and then it was about thirteen thousand and running up the street, which is like ninety feet. And I wanna note that since it's not actually like a, a named street, and there's only gonna be in reality, three properties using that property, and it's not paid currently, can I use my own utility contractor, who is a licensed utility contractor, he actually used to work for Lafayette for many years, and he can, I, I can do it for like one-fifth of Lafayette's price. So I would like to see if I could pay Lafayette to bring it to the curb line, and then pick it up myself in the unpaid street.
Oh, I think we have to look at the whole thing, as, as one project, not on the sewer, the painting and how we can.
If, if I can use my own contractor in the alley, and uh, if I do have to pave it, what would be required as far as, you know, two and two, or whatever the city would say? And then do I have to use a city-approved contractor, or can I use my own? And, uh, pretty much all I can think of right now. And, uh, pretty much all I can think of right now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to have a meeting or two to determine what we can do and what they get back to you.
All right.
What is your timeline, just?
Well.
Soon as possible.
I had a ninety day, I had a ninety day, uh. No one's, no one's beating the door down the bottom of property.
Okay.
No other, was no other offers. When I spoke to Robin Atlas, he said that a couple of people had inquired, but when he heard what was, when it be required, they failed out. You know, obviously I have to know something, but.
Okay.
Uh, there's, if, you know, there's a thirty day appeal period for the, for the variance, so it's not going to even happen until the next planning board meeting.
Okay, so.
Plenty of time, I'd say that, I'd say like at, at least another one.
Okay, all right, well, we'll, uh, uh, can you leave your information for us so we can, uh, contact you? You don't have to give, you don't have to give it over to, over.
No, I can, I mean. The board has it, the mayor has it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably, I'll call you right now if you want to.
Then we do need his contact information.
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Michael Portnoy. Address is twenty six. Stone Mill Court. Rami's works. Hey, hey, Barbara Township, your way two, three, four. Cell phone number is six zero nine. Four, three, two, five, three, two, eight.
I hope, I hope you don't get any spam calls. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Is there anyone in Zoom wishing to speak? Please raise your hand.
Anyone in Zoom wishing to speak, please raise your hand?
Okay, seeing no one, the public session is now closed. All in favor? Ah, any opposed?
Good evening, this is the regular session, Northfield City Council, February twenty first of two thousand twenty three. This meeting has been properly advertised in the press of Atlantic City on Saturday, January seventh of two thousand twenty three and in accordance with Public Law nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. May I have a flag salute led by Council President Pro Tem, please? Roll call, Mrs. Bucci, Mrs. Carfagni?
Here.
Mr. Deweze?
Here.
Mr. Leeds?
Here.
Mr. Notaro?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Palestinians?
Here.
Mr. Chow. Mr. President?
Thank you, approval of the minutes?
I make a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes from the. Meetings of January twenty third, twenty twenty three and February seventh, twenty twenty three, they have been posted, distributed to council and are on file with the clerk's office.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
I have to abstain from February seventh, twenty twenty three.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor is not here, we'll move on to the engineer's report. And so they'll do, all, all work will be in, at night on, just on the road? Thank you. Okay, this time we'll open this meeting to the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak on any topic? We ask you, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. If there is anyone in Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, the public session is now closed. On resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda considered to be routine in nature. And having been reviewed by council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certificate of availability of funds. We have one item that is removed, so, uh, may I have a, a motion to vote by consent agenda for? Fifty five through fifty nine and sixty one through sixty three?
Council President, I'd make a motion for, uh, resolutions, uh, fifty five, twenty twenty three through fifty nine, twenty twenty three. Sixty one, twenty twenty three through sixty three, twenty twenty three, to be read by consent agenda.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a motion to adopt, to approve the resolution by consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for resolutions fifty five, twenty twenty three. Through fifty nine, twenty twenty three. Uh, sixty one, twenty twenty, twenty three through sixty three, twenty twenty three to adopt. Resolutions.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bucci? Mrs. Carfagni?
Yes.
Mr. Deweze?
Yes.
Mr. Leeds?
Yeah.
Mr. Notaro?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Palestinians?
Yes.
Motion carries for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Uh, discussion for resolution sixty. I have to abstain, so I don't have any.
All right, well, I, I'll start the discussion, um, so. Myself, uh, Council President, uh, Palestinians and, and, uh, Council, Council, um, and Smith. Received an email from a local company, uh, based in Northfield. Um, stating that they could save us ten percent on the document scanning. It was no proposal. Um, it had some, uh, brochures of such, you know, uh, stating the services that they do provide locally. Nothing really substantial, um. But, you know, here, here we are, uh, just, you know, we want to bring it to you and, 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 and let you know, uh, you know, where, where we stand with it. So it'll be ten percent off of sixty thousand dollars, so.
Okay. And as you said, without any, we don't, we don't know.
No concrete, uh, quote, there's the, you know. We don't know. Uh, I don't know any of the logistics with this, with this stuff, so I don't know what their proposal would be versus. Anybody else's proposal, but, uh, you know, it's up to us whether or not we want to either, uh, A, move forward with this resolution. Or we wait and.
Or give it other company a chance.
Give them a chance to bid it or, or put a package together or, or even, or even bid the project and see what else comes in.
Right, and that would take us, we, and, uh, we would have to then create. Bid spec, specs to, to do that.
Bid specs, um, I, I don't know, I don't know what, what else is involved, thresholds, you know.
Which could eat up, which could eat up this, which could eat up our savings.
Sure, so. You know. That is where we're at.
Okay.
Mary, what's our threshold? So the proposal that we have. From. Obonics?
Yes.
That's a cost not to exceed sixty five thousand, so there, there, we don't know what the cost is going to be. Correct?
We do, there's a quote in the packet, um, this was publicly bid, um, just not by us, it's a state contract type award.
So that's the eighteen thousand three hundred and forty three, two hundred, that, that's the cost.
Yes, yes.
Mary, does this do, do all of what we need or is there, is there a whole nother round of this? So, you know, if we choose somebody now, we want to stick with the same format, the same, you know.
This, um, is the permanent records in my office. As well as all of the records for the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Which for the zoning officer would be very helpful because. Um, right now, if the planning board secretary isn't here, we don't have any information on the, on the approval history for any block and lot.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any input there? I, I, I don't know how much it costs to, to do all that, but we don't, certainly would. The time. The time of developing the specs that, that are involved in this, as, as. Mary mentioned, it was already bid out through county system or through the state education department. And they did substantial specifications.
Is it a one year contract?
It's a, no, it's just the one job.
Just for a one time.
One time. This is get all those documents digitized.
Or do we have plans to do more in?
Searchable and moving forward?
What, what's? Moving forward, we'll, budget will. Yeah, moving forward, we would, uh.
There, there's an annual.
For additional.
There's an annual storage cost too.
And a maintenance fee, as anybody would to, to have it on the cloud, so it's searchable.
If, if, assuming this is approved, if, once this is finished, next would be the building department.
Okay.
The state has very strict standards with regard to an imaging system. Um, it can't just be a document on a P, on a, on a, on a thumb drive. Um, it has to be in what's called a PDF A format. Um, it has to out, the format has to outlive the vendor. So if, for some reason, you move to a different vendor in the future, another vendor has to be able to use that format, it can't be proprietary. Is my understanding, this particular vendor did some work for Linwood, but it, it involved putting it on a flash drive in a PDF format, so. I'm not certain, we've seen an example of what we need from this particular vendor.
Right. And we need stuff that's searchable and.
That's the whole goal.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, for Oprah.
Yes, I mean, you don't.
And for, and for the planning board for them to search. Right now, it's manual.
Yeah.
To search all those records.
Rami, can I ask you as the zoning officer to comment right now on, on? How it would benefit you to be able to search a database for planning board records as opposed to what you do now?
All right, so even if to, to find that if a, if a location had an existing. Had, had, had already gotten it, in, in existing use. Okay.
And not just for us, but for the public as well, so.
They didn't do the same work. The, the, the job that they hired this company for was just. Yeah, just a small. And it's property records, I believe. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't this type, it wasn't this type of documentation.
Mary, did the company say what happened after twenty two, so they're going to scan nineteen twenty one to twenty twenty two, is there an annual?
Yeah.
Scan thereafter?
Yeah, once a year, they would update all of our records. Um, in the meantime. We would have paper records like we do now, and they have a whole process in place for, if they have our records for scanning, if I get an over request. So if they have a twenty four hour turnaround, the process, my request for a record gets no longer in my possession, which is huge.
Yeah.
So that there would be an annual cost, I guess, to Councilman Smith's boss, in addition to the storage, scanning of the most recent year as well.
Yes, going forward, new development, you want to update the database, the current records that they are creating.
Do the, do the, do the paper documents and everything get destroyed after?
The interesting thing, you can, so with a state certified system, you can actually get rid of your paper. Um, my records, my permanent stuff, sort of the legacy of the town, all those books and things like that, I, I probably.
You're going to keep that? But I mean, all the, like, the, the plans and the, and all that stuff.
Wants to hold on to them? Not my purview to say whether she has to or not, but yes, the idea is.
Hold on to them here?
Yes.
Are we running out of? Yeah.
People are attached to paper, man.
I don't know, not me, I don't like.
Still reading this paper. I know.
Mary, do I have with the, the proposal that we're given with Obonics, it says estimated volume? But we're not to exceed sixty five, so if it's over that.
We'll come back for more authorization, the council put a hundred thousand dollars in my capital budget for scanning. We're very proud of the fact that. We're coming in low with, with two kind of big projects. Um, the estimate is based on, she was here for, she came in, she did my office first, it came in very low. We invited her back, she spent a good deal of time with Robin, um, in the records room in the basement. So this isn't kind of a guess, this is, this is a very accurate estimate of, of what it's going to cost in terms of the volume of records that they have. Um, we've seen, um, multiple demos, we've seen it in action. Um, there were a couple of other vendors that we looked at. This particular vendor is used by the Atlantic County Board of Health, they're very happy with them, we're continues with them, Ocean City uses them. So they have a proven track record with government agencies. And for us, the record is completely different than just a business on the street. How we have to handle records and retain them and destroy them and produce them. So it's. Be, be, being the records, um, imager for, um, a doctor's office isn't the same as where we're going.
Thank you, Mary, like, thanks for hosting these folks all the time that they come in. Anything else? May I have a motion to, uh? Adopt resolution sixty? Roll call.
Mrs. Bucci? Mrs. Carfagni?
Yes.
Mr. Deweze?
Yeah.
Mr. Leeds?
Yes.
Mr. Notaro?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Palestinians?
Yes.
Motion carries for the adoption of resolution sixty?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me, I abstained. Oh, I don't have to abstain because it's not the conflict anymore. You're confused. We go back, we're, we're good, we're good, I'm not getting any trouble, I'm not getting any trouble for voting on that, okay? Having a repeat, okay. It's a good thing this is on tape, uh, ordinance.
Ordinance four of two thousand twenty three is a calendar year twenty twenty three ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. And that's in accordance with NJSA forty A colon four dash forty five point fourteen. This is the second reading, there will be a public hearing, after which the matter will be considered for final. This is the second reading, there will be a public hearing, after which the matter will be considered for final adoption. If approved this evening, it will be published a final time in the press of Atlantic City on Saturday, February twenty fifth. Since introduction, the full ordinance has been posted in the lobby of City Hall as well as on the municipal website. Any member of the public who requested a copy would have been provided with one at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk.
Uh, at this, is there a? Okay, the public hearing on ordinance four dash twenty twenty three is now open. Any member of the public wishing to speak on ordinance four dash twenty twenty three? As, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone in Zoom? Okay. No one in Zoom, uh, the public session is now closed. Roll call.
Mrs. Bucci? Mrs. Carfano?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey's?
Yeah.
Mr. Leeds?
Yeah.
Mr. Notaro?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Paulistina?
Yes.
Motion carries for the adoption of ordinance four of twenty twenty three?
May I have a motion for payment of bills? Roll call.
Mrs. Bucci?
Yeah.
Mrs. Carfano?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey's?
See.
Mr. Leeds?
Yeah.
Mr. Notaro?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Paulistina?
Yes.
Motion carries for payment of bill.
Meeting notices?
The budget workshop meeting this Thursday, fourth Thursday, and Stephen's here, the next council meeting is March the seventh.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
For your patience. Yes. Well, thanks to the Mike and me, you know.